Alrighty. I am, we knew that Mayor Prof. Tim Schiff was not going to be able to be with us tonight, and I'm expecting Councilmember Nelson, but we do have a quorum, so I'm calling the City Council portion of this meeting to order. Mr. Clark, do you have a quorum?
We have a full quorum. I'll go over the story from our commission to order.
Okay, and I need, I promised Colin I would take care of this disclaimer. If you're gonna speak, and we hope that everyone will, you'll need to reach forward and turn your mic on, and you have to get uncomfortably close to the mic, or it's not going to pick up. So, you gotta lean into the mic, and it makes it hard for people at home that are watching to hear, and for some of us, we need to be able to hear it over the system anyway. So, if you don't mind, I'm gonna start with you, Diana. Let's go around the room. If you'll just say your name, and maybe how long you've been on the board, or just make sure that we all know who each other is, and I'll start with Diana.
I'm Diana Rose, and I am a new member on the board. Chris Cartwright, and I've been on the board a couple of years. What's her? Chris Cartwright, around two to three years, I don't know.
Blake Kaiser, I think I'm in my second or third year on the board.
Susan Long, and I think I've been here like, what?
1998.
Since 1998.
Dan A. Clark, Chair of the Board, been here since 1998.
Dave Gaddis, I'm the Interim Planning Director, been here six months.
Bill Peterson, I've been on City Council far too long.
Councilmember Deborah Jones, Place 5.
Mayor Schrader.
I'm the City Manager, Linda Uml, been here, will be, a year in March, and while I have the floor, shameless plug, anybody at home that has not voted in Season 3 for BASTROP at www/smallbusinessrevolution.org, please do so on every device with every email you have. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Will you vote once a day?
Every email can, each email can vote once a day.
Good job. Until Tuesday. No, sir.
Bill Anis, I've been on the council a year.
Jennifer Bills, I've been here a year as of Monday, and I'm the Assistant Planning Director.
Alright, well, we, council made a commitment to have a joint meeting with all of our boards and commissions. Not only was my goal to have the boards and commissions be a reflection of our community, but we heard from several of the boards that often, they didn't have a lot of interaction with council, and it's hard to all be on the same page if we don't at some point spend some time together. So, it's intended, this is a workshop setting, it's intended to have a lot of interaction, so I would really encourage you to ask questions, and let's bounce things around, and make sure that we cover anything that you would like some input, and council as well, as we've done in the past with the other boards, we want to make sure that we ask questions for clarity. It makes it easier for all of us. You guys can't read our minds, and we can't read your minds, so. With that, I think, Jennifer, you're gonna start us off with some information?
Yes. If I'm on, as I should be. Uh, yes, we've created a PowerPoint to go over some basic information about the commission's activities, and things they've been working on over the last year, and are working on this year. So, to kind of recap 2017, the board approved seven certificates of appropriateness. Oh, sorry, I'm actually, cut a slide. It was year transition for the board and for staff. We had two new planning staff, myself and Allison, that started in February. Pat Crawford started as a new HLC member in July. We had Dave start in August, and then Diana Rose is now serving as our new HLC member as the P&amp;Z representative on the board. During the year, they held six regular meetings. During those meetings, they approved seven certificates of appropriateness for both signs and renovations to houses, and they've also recommended approval to two historic landmarks, one being the first United Methodist Church, and then the Campbell-Taylor-Greely-Fisk Building at 1005 Hill Street, and both of those were approved by the City Council. They also started in November, viewing some training videos from the Texas Historical Commission, kind of reviewing best practices for historic preservation ordinances, and how to go about creating design guidelines and standards for historic downtowns. We're also gonna cover the work plan for the board, as council has crafted over the last year. In the strategic plan, council adopted a mission statement and a vision statement. The vision statement includes preserving our history and character while embracing progress, which I think this board is very strongly involved in that part of the vision. And then staff and the board are working to make sure that all of our services are efficient and timely for our customers. Within the strategic plan, there were the nine areas, including fiscal, economic, vitality, communication, uniquely BASTROP, organizational excellence, multimodal mobility, community safety, unique environment, and managed growth. Uniquely BASTROP is the category that the HLC's goals fall under. Within that work plan, we have 177 action items that cover most focus areas, which is a good undertaking for all of staff and the boards. All of these action items include timeframes and responsible parties and boards that need to be reviewing these steps. And within the planning department, we have created our own detailed departmental work plan to make sure we're getting all of these to you guys in a timely fashion, and then to City Council. Two of the action statements relate specifically to historic preservation. Under the uniquely BASTROP category, the first was to strengthen the local preservation ordinance and obtain certified local government designation, and that's scheduled to be done this year. And then, in the next year, fiscal year, we have apply for funding to develop design guidelines for a historic district. And the first one, the board started reviewing our draft ordinance and existing historic landmark ordinance in January, and we'll be reviewing the final draft at our next meeting, next week.
May I ask you a question real quick?
Sure.
If you go back. So, we're gonna have now, so we have a national certification, we have a state certification, and now we're gonna have a local certification, is that right?
Well, we already have, in the current historic landmark code, we have significant and historic landmark designations, so we do have local designations. So, those are those plaques you see, those are the first slide that you see on the buildings, that's the local BASTROP designation for a historic structure. But then in addition to that, there's the state, and then the national historic designation. Is that what's her?
I don't think that's her question. Why are we striving to get a certified local government designation?
Certified local government is a program of the Texas Historical Commission, and if you meet their qualifications with your ordinance and the way you're protecting your resources meets their program, you're eligible to apply to be a CLG, Certified Local Government, and then there's also a available grant fund within that program that then you're eligible to apply for.
While we're broken up, you might, you might, yeah, while you're broken up, you might define what a COA is.
A COA?
Certificate of Appropriateness.
A certificate of appropriateness is a process that currently, any historic landmark designated as local historic landmark has to apply for to make any significant exterior changes to their property or site that could alter its historic nature. So, that's the basics of a COA, and we'll go a little bit into some of the revisions and kind of expansion of that we're looking at in the updated ordinance. So, part of our historic landmark ordinance update, we are, the first ordinance was adopted in 1998, which is when some of you started on the board, that was the beginning of the Historic Landmark Commission, was in 1998. And then there were some updates to that in, I think I, actually, it's 2007, not 2008, was the last major update to the historic landmark ordinance. In 2009, the HLC and staff worked very closely with some consultants to draft a new ordinance, and my understanding of the history of that is that it got through all the boards and got to council, and kind of fizzled out for various reasons. So, since that 2009 draft, we have met with the Certified Local Government Coordinator with the state to go over our current ordinance, and the, some of the stuff that was in the draft, to make sure that we're gonna make revisions that will meet the Certified Local Government program, once we're done, and get that designation. Another major change was that the Form-based Code was adopted. So, there were several things in the 2009 draft that was really working to try to protect some of those specific kind of character zones that were found in the downtown and older town area, that the Form-based Code kind of implemented those, and spoke to some of those concerns. So, that was something that we had to review, the new draft that we presented, that had to take into consideration, the Form-based Code, so that we're not creating contradictory So, currently, the commission and staff have created a draft that I've actually have in front of all of you, so you can go over it, and if you have any comments to staff, let us know. But this revision was largely based on the 2009 draft that was already reviewed and recommended by the HLC, and then also the Certified Local Government comments for the changes that would meet their guidelines. One of the major changes is that it would establish a staff member as the Historic Preservation Officer. Currently, it's the Chair of the Board, which is not recommended by the state. It also will consolidate our local designation from two categories to one. Currently, we have a significant landmark, and then we have a historic landmark, and it's kind of confusing what's allowed on one and what's not allowed on the other, so this would collapse that into one historic landmark designation, and clarify what requirements would be on those properties.
What will that be called?
It'll be called historic landmark, and there'll be a process that will lead to review the ones that are currently only designated as significant, to work those through the process to redesignate them as the historic landmark.
And there'll be local landmarks as opposed to the state and the national landmarks?
Yeah.
It could be the same, I mean, you could be multiple categories.
And one of the things we've gone through, or that staff is still working on with this process, is kind of cleaning up and clarifying our historic resource map, and trying to make sure we're showing all of the nationally-registered properties, and make sure that we, we're looking at, there's a lot of things that show up in the national register that aren't there anymore, so those are things that we may need to make sure that they get delisted or that we note on our map.
So, what's the benefit of the homeowner to have a local historic designation, along with, let's say they have others, or maybe they don't have any, so what is the benefit to the property owner?
The benefit will be protecting their property against changes in the future, and protecting the neighborhood overall from any destroying of that, and you also, you get also a shiny plaque, that's another benefit of being a historic landmark. Currently, and this is another change to the ordinance, currently there is a rebate that they get on their property taxes, or refund they get, but the board has previously determined that to phase that out as we move forward. So, there would not be a monetary incentive, but there is, it's shown to be incentive on, down the road, your property is worth more to be a historic property that's being protected by local code.
Because of local code, you have a little bit more control over your, I guess, your value of your property, your land. National listing and Texas listing really does not protect that property at all, so you really need your local code and your local ordinances to come in and take care of that. By the fact that we're taking historic and significant and rolling those into one package, when we first put the ordinance together, historic, we're the people that would sign a contract with the city saying, "We would maintain our property, and we pledged to do this," and so therefore you receive the rebate back. You also sign the contract that it wouldn't be torn down, it couldn't be moved, it couldn't be raised, there are many stipulations. Under the new ordinance, everything will be exactly the same and equal, so that incentive is no longer necessary to be there.
So, is the idea that, is there the additional idea that if you take away that monetary incentive, that that's gonna go fund the representative, that, is that gonna be a paid position with the city now, the person that's representing the historic?
Somebody in planning and zoning on staff, they'll be trained in it, so it's not a new position, it will just be a responsibility of one of the planning staff.
Okay.
Which, you're looking at her.
And, Councilman, in the past, we did have a staff member that took care of pretty much everything that falls under this, we just didn't give her the title of being the right preservation officer, it was given to her.
And there are certain environmental reviews, and through different grant processes that do require a Historic Preservation Officer to weigh in on state and federal projects sometimes, so that would be the staff member's responsibility to weigh in on those projects and provide documentation rather than a commission number.
Okay, this may be not a smart question, so I apologize in the face. If you get that local designation, can you change your mind later?
There is a process for opting out in the ordinance.
Yeah, so...
I actually think you're required to have an opt-out in putting into everything, aren't you? The process?
Yes. It may not be the easiest process to opt-out, but yes, there is a process to opt-out. One of the other requirements for the HL, for the CLG, and also that the board has been looking for for a while, is the process for creating a local historic district. So, currently, we have a national historic registered district over the downtown, which is kind of an interestingly-defined area, but this would actually give us, the board, the commission, the ability to adopt a local historic district, that we could define boundaries, and then adopt specific design criteria for each one of those districts. That would speak to that specific time period and architectural style that changes, when people come forward to make changes in that area, that was, that's what you would review against for those areas, 'cause as towns build, you can see those very distinctive shifts between the architecture and site design. The next step with this, though, it will require historic surveys and the development of those design guidelines. So, the historic survey is required because you first kind of have to know what are those historic resources, what are those types of housing and styles in each of those neighborhoods to define the boundaries, and then the design guidelines have to be formed around those. You can form one guideline that covers all of them if you feel that they're similar enough, or that the design guidelines have enough leeway in them, but it's, sometimes it's a lot better to design them for each district. Additionally, with these amendments, it revises the process for designating historic landmark. Currently, the Historic Landmark Commission reviews their application, and then that gets forwarded to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which reviews the application, which then gets forwarded to City Council. We revised the process to take P&amp;Z out of that step, so the HLC will make that recommendation directly to City Council, so it's less time for the applicant to go through that process.
That's, I guess that's legal, because you wouldn't be doing it if it wasn't, but the time the ordinance was written, P&amp;Z had to be involved, from the standpoint of, it being a zoning process, is that being changed?
It's not technically a zoning process, I mean, it carries greater weight if it's actually a zoning overlay, but it's not required.
So, we're really not changing the zoning of it, there's a reason why it's not going to P&amp;Z. We're recommending to council to mark, give a protection, a historic.
But isn't the zoning quite against the right protected?
This ordinance that you'll be adopting, and you'll be adopting it through the auspices of the Historic Landmark Ordinance as opposed to the zoning ordinance.
And I suspect that, I haven't seen it, but does it have any penalties for failure to follow the rules?
Yes.
Okay, so, that is no different than P&amp;Z or any of the ordinances that you adopt. The ordinance will come with a penalty not to exceed provision, which we then have to publish in the newspaper, but when that happens, whether it's P&amp;Z or Historical Commission or whatever, it carries the same weight, because you have created legislation that if people choose to ignore, there is a penalty provision for failure to do that.
Going on, another change in the draft is that we've established an administrative approval of certificate of appropriateness in certain cases. So, occasionally, you'll have people that come in with something that is a minor change to something that is out of the direct eye of the right of way, and it doesn't significantly change the structure, and then some sign changes that are fairly minor could, can be reviewed and approved administratively, which will be even easier to accomplish once the design guidelines are adopted, because there's a lot of historic things, as long as you meet X, Y, and Z in the design guidelines, it can be approved. So, it's setting up that ability, some of that may not be available until we get the design guidelines established. The other, the major change I referred to earlier, is it restricts the existing refund incentive program, we kind of don't have a specific name for it, to the current properties that are listed today, since they've already signed contracts with the city and have gone through that process. That would exist for those properties, but properties going forward would not receive that incentive.
So, is it tied to the property or to the property owner?
Property.
Tied to the property, it transfers from ownership to ownership.
That doesn't sound like it's something that's phasing out.
It's phasing out because there'll be no new ones added to it, and it's always up to council decide whether or not they're going to fund the program.
And, we still have several structures in town that are not protected at this time, so, you know, having this will help, but I certainly understand the draw of the incentive, but, you know, once we get a new designation, and are eligible for grants and stuff, they'll be.
Yeah, so, currently, the incentive program is funded on a year-by-year basis by City Council, it's actually a line item in the planning and zoning budget, so, it is the possibility that it may not be funded in future years, so. But currently, it's restricting that incentive to these properties.
I will say this, the incentive is not a great deal of refund.
And it's also very complicated to calculate, it's not, the information's not readily available, we have to actually go to the county and full, the appraisal of district records, you know, what improvement's valued, and what, and it's become rather burdensome to try to calculate, and we're ending up with, you know, fifty, hundred, two hundred dollars rebate, and all they're giving to people.
Okay, well, now we're homing in on what I wanted to talk about, which is, that doesn't sound efficient, and it doesn't sound like the very, very best use of staff time, so if there's an average that it's a hundred bucks, it's two hundred bucks, it's whatever, and if you're changing the program now, how many properties are getting that refund? Is it twenties, fifties, hundreds?
I think it's about around twenty, twenty-five.
Okay, I would be so bold as just something to consider, since it's a workshop, there's twenty-five properties, they've been in this program all this time, they've averaged X, we're giving everybody back a hundred bucks from now on, or whatever that right number is, so that you, and that may be like so illegal, 'cause we have to have a, but I would just encourage us to simplify it, particularly if it's only for twenty-five properties, and if it's not a huge amount of money, there just seems like there should be some sort of trade-off of, it shouldn't cost the city taxpayer three times as much for staff to work on it and calculate it than the check. That's like the, you know, when they spend fifty cents on the stamp to send you a ten cent interest, you know, there's some sanity that should be entered into, just offering that as a suggestion.
Thank you, and in the history of that, we start, excuse me, Dave, the history of starting with the incentive program is in order to build up the support in the community for the historic preservation, and it, like we just said, it's been going on since 1998. I believe we have our support with the historic preservation in our community, and we understand what that does for the community, so maybe it is a time to really simplify that whole process.
And the other thing I would caution you is, particularly the two of you who have been on it since 2018, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say you both live in properties, I'm, 1998, that you both live in properties that are getting that incentive, then that sort of turns into, well, you want us to support it, but you get the rebate, and everybody else, I just would caution you, let's make sure we're trying to be fair to everybody.
And I think probably the other part of that incentive was, again, the way the city has been calculating that, as you make improvements to your historic property, then your rebate got larger, because the value of your property became larger, you know, among other things, but anyway, I understand that making it uniform and not having to do all those calculations certainly would simplify.
I'm just, I just want it to be fair. I have no problem with it, I understand why it's there, but particularly if it's not gonna be going forward for other properties, I just don't want you to accidentally have backed yourself into an uncomfortable position where it's, twenty-five properties are getting something in a town that's quite, is it not twenty-five?
It's more like seventy.
Oh.
Yeah.
I thought the frantic was, "That's not the right number." Okay, and I'm not trying to change the rules, I just, I'm just saying, you know, let's kind of think out of the box a little bit, and that's just my opinion, I don't even get to vote.
One thing that I think we need to remember is that the Historic Landmark Ordinance was designed, and it's, I think it's done a good job of, this is an economic development issue, keeping our structures intact and looking good, and, because that's what people wanna drive around and see, and so, this is not only protecting old structures, it's also protecting our economic vitality in a certain way.
And I can say this about that rebate, for me, that money has always gone back into the exterior of my house and landscape every year, which I spend a huge amount of money on, and that check is really not, it's a couple hundred dollars, but I tell you what, I use that check, I go straight down and I use it to, for the exterior of my home, so, and I really appreciate it, so, I think it was, it's always been a really good incentive for me to remind me, hey, it's time to redo some stuff outside, so, anyway, just wanted to put that out there.
So, looking at the upcoming schedule, we actually got the comments back from the city attorney this week, and incorporated them into the draft that you guys have. It's going, we're posting to go to HLC next Wednesday with that draft for consideration, for recommendation on to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Planning and Zoning Commission does have to review and forward that on, because it is a part of, it's located in our zoning ordinance, is where it's located, and when you're doing the historic districts, that does start to impact your zoning entitlements a little bit more. So, if they don't get, if the HLC does not, has some tweaks, and will approve it in March, or recommend it in March, then it'll go to P&amp;Z review in March, and then to City Council Workshop in April, to be adopted hopefully at the second meeting in April.
So, P&amp;Z will get an opportunity to realize that they won't be a part of the step in the process, but that is the role that Diana's performing on the commission, because she's the representative of planning and zoning, so they're, it's not like they're getting cut out completely. getting cut out completely.
And, well, and there's still a step actually in the historic district designation. So those, since that'll be covering a broader base of properties and kind of establishing an overlay within the city that applies to historic and possibly nonhistoric properties alike, that will go to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So if the Historic Landmark Commission defines a historic district that they want to propose, they'll get that formulated for that planning and zoning, which will then come to city council. So that, so there still will be a process that goes through P and Z for the districts, but not for the specific landmark.
Is there criteria to receive, and I'm going back, because I'm just trying to think through the whole thing, is there criteria to receive the rebate? And what made me think about it was council member Jones saying, well, I always spend it on, you know, paint or landscaping or whatever. So once the property is designated, do they get the money regardless of whether they're keeping their property up or not?
Actually, you can have that removed from you if you are not maintaining your property. In the contract you've signed with the city, you sign a contract that you will maintain the property.
And who enforces that?
City, or basically the citizens of the city that will bring it, bring it to the attention of staff, that this home is receiving a rebate, and gutters are falling off the house, the columns are rotting, they're letting dry rock take place, but yet they're still receiving the check. We'll review that property immediately. But it, that relies upon the city.
But that's a staff decision, so the, this commission's not involved in, they are or they are not meeting the criteria?
We have never had to review one to have it removed. We did have to review one that was not receiving funding to get them for demolition by neglect, and that did get corrected quite quickly. I believe that was a thousand dollar day penalty. It didn't take long for that to get corrected.
So I guess that's something your preservation officer would take care of. Thank you.
Districts, just a quick note on districts, as we keep talking about the design districts or the districts, the historic districts, really the only reason for pulling in a district is when you go to design standards or design guidelines, you try to lump like areas together so that your Bible doesn't have to cover all twelve apostles, you can cut it down and do one small thing, and that's really what this is all designed for, to make it easier on staff and easier for developers and builders also to go, oh, I'm in this area, so I only need to pay attention to these rules, I don't have to look at all of the rules.
And Mayor, if you look on page fourteen of the draft ordinance, it describes the incentive program and the loss of incentives and how that's made.
I'm so glad this is dated February fifteenth, because I'm like, I haven't seen this to read, so this really is hot off the presses, right? Okay, thank you.
So just also briefly cover the roles and responsibilities of the commission and city council. For the Historic Landmark Commission, they are charged with providing knowledge and advice to protect, enhance, and perpetuate sites and structures of historic and cultural importance to promote economic, cultural, educational, and the general welfare of public, which is a fairly large task. And to do that, currently, currently they do significant, they recommend significant and historic landmarks. This is assuming that the, the new code goes into effect. They would review and recommend historic landmarks to city council. They would review and recommend the establishment of local historic districts to P and Z and city council. They already currently do this and will continue to approve certificates of appropriateness for changes to how, structure, sites, and signs, and then also recommend historic design standards and guidelines for those districts that would get adopted. Planning staff is responsible for processing the applications that come in and providing the analysis on the certificates of appropriateness and the historic landmarks. As, I, I have some background in this, and will continue with staff pursuing more educational opportunities to make sure that we're providing adequate service to the board on all these items. Built in the ability to approve administrative COAs in limited circumstances. Also, maintain the inventory of historic resources. We have to have that map up to date, so people know if their house is on that list, and then once a district's adopted, know that, whether or not they're within that district. Also, we assist the commission with research and analysis for the historic surveys, the design guidelines, and standards, and for ordinance updates. And then also a staff member will serve as the historic preservation officer after the adoption of the ordinance. City council gets to approve the landmarks that are recommended by the Historic Landmark Commission, approve the local historic districts, adopt the new historic preservation ordinance updates, and then also adopt the historic design standards and guidelines, because those will need to be an adopted item that can be enforced on those properties. The next steps, next steps, we're, we're going past the, after, after we get all this done, over the next several months, what, what do we intend to do next? The next immediate step is to apply and receive the certified local government status. That's a process with the Texas Historical Commission, and they've been very helpful on working with us to make sure we're getting everything done that we need to for that. One of the items that they strongly encourage slash almost require is a historic survey. What that will do is create an inventory of our historically significant resources throughout town, and identify contributing and non-contributing sites and structures. And what that means is, you can have a part of a house that is considered historic, but then there was that addition that got added in nineteen eighty-five that is not. So you actually, within a specific property, some of it may be historic and may be contributing, and some may not, and those changes are things that can be done more readily. And they'll also help, the survey will also assist in determining what our historic district boundaries should be. One of the questions that will probably come up as we are looking at our schedule with our hundred and eighty-seven work plan items, is, is this something to do in-house or with a consultant?
How much is anticipated for a consultant to do this?
Depends on how exhaustive you want the survey to be, but they can be fairly pricey for fifty thousand probably minimum.
When do we anticipate doing that? Twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one?
It's in the work plan to start that in, I think, twenty nineteen. So, and, but one of the benefits, if, once we receive the certified local government status, is you are able to apply for grants that will fund a part of that cost. So previous cities I worked for have been able to fund half the cost of their survey through the CLG program.
Is it just, is it not reasonable to use local resources for that? Because there's groups, you know, specifically, I'm thinking about, when I was on the homes tour three years ago, one of the things that you get is a gift for doing that, because it's really a lot of work to do that, is they go and they research your house, they tell you the history, who's owned it, when it was built, you know, just really amazing portfolios, and all of that's on file. And, and I'm sorry, I can't think of the group, but the Historical Society, and it seems like a lot of that work is, you know, might have already been prepared, so I don't know why we would, what would be the advantage in paying someone to come in and do that when I think a lot of that is already held locally by, you know, people that are real enthusiasts, you know, about the historic portions of town.
And I think that is a good starting point, and we can explore that option as well. There's also sometimes student projects, student groups that are able to do projects, so there are other avenues we can investigate other than a professional consultant, but typically when you do that historic, that inventory, you're inventorying pretty much every house on whether or not it's historic, and they literally go every house down the street, not just the ones they already think are historic. Those resources would be great, because it cuts down the time that anyone has to do researching a house, once, if we already know it's on a list, and...
So they're, they're surveying the entire town?
Not the entire town, but you usually define an area that you're...
Oh, the defined areas.
Yes, defined area. So we wouldn't be doing, you know, there's not much point in going into some of our eighties and nineties subdivision, but yeah, so typically where the construction has been done fifty years or prior are the areas that you look at.
Okay. What is deemed historic? I'm gonna show my ignorance here, because I have not studied the ordinance, so when do I need to be born before to be historic?
Fifty years gets closer every year, you know?
Fifty years is what is considered.
So nineteen sixty-seven or older?
When we first put the ordinance together, we were using seventy years as our cutoff time, when we did our first pass through in ninety-six, I believe, when we first began the whole setup of this. But the state and national, everyone looks at that as fifty years, what's its fifth year to it?
Well, there's also criteria in the ordinance, the old ordinance and the new ordinance, the defined, I mean, it could have been built in nineteen fifty if it meets three of these, is it still three or two? Or whatever it is, if it meets the criteria that are in the ordinance.
Well, nineteen fifty would be, I mean, you're saying it's more than fifty years.
Well, what I'm saying is that we're thinking seventy-five years, we're getting, we're getting old, and, well, let's say...
And that was really kind of my point, and where I'm really going, because it cracks me up that we still refer to it as the new addition. I, I believe the new addition's getting pretty close to fifty years.
We've been trying, we've been trying to mark that entire addition since the first day we started this, because that addition is unique to this town, it's unique to this state, and it's unique at the fact that we still have almost every one of the structures in that addition. So there are parts of that, we even have some ranch-style homes were built in the seventies that are almost right there, ready to be considered, and we're now being educated on the architectural importance of ranch styles. So this isn't just a stagnant thing that happens once and you're done with it, it constantly has to be worked and maneuvered.
And that was kind of my point, the fifty years is getting closer every year, right? So I'm, I couldn't decide whether to bring this up or not, I'm dancing around it. On these districts, there's gonna be people who are thrilled to be in the district, and people who are not quite as thrilled to be in the district. Are you gonna have a public hearing? Is, how, what's the process for that? And I, and if it's in here, I apologize, because I haven't had a chance to read all this.
I believe we do public hearings in pretty much any major changes we do here on anything in the city, so definitely something as, as city-wide as this would be. But remember, and that's why I brought up all ago, the purpose of the district is not to control the district, it's to make it easier to bundle the district. So if you live in that district and you are in a home that was built in nineteen ninety-eight, no sweat. You live in that district and you were in a home that was built in nineteen fourteen, and the porch is rotted off of it, and you want to put a porch back on it, you look to your district, you open your design standard, you have four choices of posts, you pick one, and you're done. It makes it much easier for the builders, it makes it much easier for the homeowners, and it keeps the value of the entire neighborhood raised to that level, instead of all of a sudden you have brick columns in a house that was built in nineteen fourteen, whenever they weren't even using the red brick or whatever, but, you know, it just helps control the value of the property of your neighborhood.
And I really like the idea that that does seem consistent and fair, and not, well, so the only way I can get back the money is if you pick the shade of green that I'm painting beside, and that's not, that's not at all what we're talking about. Okay. So this is actually, because I'm thinking about, which I was gonna bring up, what Linda said, I mean, we have a lot of opportunities to bring up districts that, you know, we have mid-century districts, and I think that's pretty exciting, and, and an area that's really near and dear to my heart, which is the whole Mayfield Park area, you know, that's just huge for those of us who've been here a long time to look at seeing that whole era being perpetuated, so I think it's a good job, pretty interesting.
It also, by doing the districts and doing the design standards, it makes it much easier currently, someone lives in a historic home and they're wanting to repair a porch with new columns and put the columns they think should have been actually on that style and period of home, they have to fill out the paperwork, needs to wait for the next Historic Landmark Commission meeting, the meeting we meet, and we decide whether or not that's appropriate. Once you're in a district, and you know your district gets the four choices of columns, and you're picking one of those, staff gives you a checkmark, and you walk out the door that day from planning department. You don't wait another thirty to sixty days to get approval to repair the porch.
Your recommendations are gonna be real specific to era?
That's why you do districts, because districts, that's, well, let's back that up, the reason why you do an inventory is because you need to find out what lives in your area, what all matches each other, setbacks, you have a part over here in the older part of town over towards Pine Street, where the setbacks on the front yards are maybe ten foot. Then you get up into the farm lots up at the other end of Con Street, where some of the setbacks are forty feet, seventy feet setbacks for front yards. The design districts, you look at those areas, and they lump that all together, so that it's all the ones that are built in this period or have these type of setbacks are all in this district. And you can drive through town, once you start realizing what those periods are and how that works, it's real easy to see what divides those districts, and most of it was done by the age and the period that they were built.
But clearly, you can have multiple...
Clearly.
...eras in the same district, so then you would be publishing different guidelines for bracketing it by age or design or something?
That's why a lot of times your design guidelines are just done as one central book, so that everything's in there, and you can leaf through and find things, but it makes it much easier for staff and for the applicant, if you can divide the districts and write one specific standard for each district, and in those districts, you'll have the choices that will cover the different periods that are built in the district.
So Dan, if you have somebody, let's say, that has a nineteen fourteen house, and they don't have any kinds of hesitation on it, it's just an old house, and they want to repair the porch, do they still have to ask for what types of repairs that, as far as the design of the porch, or can they put whatever they want on it, since they're not meeting any designation requirement?
That is what the design districts and the design guidelines will help to do, because that's, you know, you talk about keeping the value of the neighborhood. If you're in that district, a nineteen fourteen home, and it's not listed, you still can go to the design standards, turn to it, you see that style of home listed there, and give you the four columns that would be appropriate for that home, you should choose one, because it's appropriate for the home.
But I guess the question I'm asking is, do they have, will they have?
As, as the ordinance is currently written, once the historic, a district is adopted, yes, they would be required, if they're a contributing structure.
If they're contributing structure.
And that's one thing that's established with the survey, is what's considered contributing and non-contributing. So if it's that nineteen fourteen, the very specific thing that was built, yes, but if it was the nineteen eighty-five add-on, no, you wouldn't be required to do anything.
And I think that that is hugely important, because one of the analogies I use when I teach CPM is an old wonderful house that is dilapidated. Most cities take the most efficient, cost-effective means to deal with that, and that's to tear it down, and what an absolutely travesty, because our ordinances today would not allow us to build downtown, as wonderful as it is. So in that neighborhood, what you get is a whole bunch of historical relevance, and then this sore thumb that's circa twenty eighteen. And the minute you do that, you have actually deflated the property values and ensure that they never grow. One of the areas that I always reference is the M Streets in Dallas. They're thousand-square-foot ranch-style homes, and the minimum entry point to the M Streets is about a million, million and a half dollars, because everybody protected the structural integrity of that, because Dallas put these kinds of ordinances in place, and today, that's an address to have. And so I'm delighted that we're doing that, because from a property sustainability to the future, it's just good for the community.
It's something to also think about, the Form-Based Code has done a lot of this already, because if you're, are in a nineteen fourteen home that, let's say it's dilapidated, the front porch is gone, there's not anything there to give it any architecture character, it would probably be listed as eligible, non-contributing, there's one where it could be contributing if they repaired it correctly, but there's a different code on that. If you live between two homes that are historic currently, you have to come in for a certificate of appropriateness for infill, so you are already controlled by the historic homes you live in or live beside in the historic district, even though we don't have historic districts. Because of the Form-Based Code and in its area, if you are living next door or between two historic homes, and you're wanting to build a new home, or you're wanting to change your style of your home, you have to come in for a certificate of appropriateness, because it has to meet the neighborhood, it has to meet the neighborhood setbacks, the houses on both sides of you. So some of that has already been done through Form-Based Code, and it's not all the weight being set on the district so much anymore, other than the districts make it easier for staff and easier for applicants to find the area that they're actually looking for in the design standards.
So you guys are having weekly kumbaya hugs with the real... So you guys are having weekly kumbaya hugs with the realtors, right? Because the very, we know where this is going, nobody told me that. And I bought the lot and I didn't know that and now I'm pulling permits and you're talking to me about districts and things I've never heard of before. So I would like for you guys to take an action item of somehow, how are we going to get the realtors in town educated and knowledgeable of this? And I'm open for creative ways. It is really tough to look at somebody and say, sorry, buyer beware, you know, we didn't make up the rules yesterday. But that, and I'm not saying that y'all are responsible for that, I'm just saying we know it's a problem and we ought to make sure. We can't change the rules and not have some advertising and hey, let's all realize what's going on here.
Not to make a joke of what the mayor just said, but to prove a point about how this already is known in the community. If you get AT&amp;T cable, the cable guy will tell you all about it. Because it is apparently a challenge when you live in a historically relevant house to get cable. And when he came to our house, he said, oh, I'm glad you're not historic because if you were, here's what I'd have to do. So you might invite the cable guy to your forum and let him do your story for you because he's a good, good representative.
The problem is when the cable guys, after you've bought the house, that's, that's.
I will say that in the two thou, when was the last time, two thousand and nine, when we put together draft ordinance, we had many meetings with all the realtors. We went through their realtor luncheons, we got them all the information as to what this was going to be doing. And even in when we first did the first ordinance in nineteen ninety-eight, there were many sit downs with the realtor groups to let them know that these are the properties that they're selling and they need to be educated on it. Still to this day, we sit in our HLC meetings and find that we have a homeowner that has bought a historic home and they didn't even know that it was registered with the local registry. Other than it being on the tax rolls, the realtors aren't getting that information out there. The homeowner, that shows up on title search, that's why it's very important that every time we record these things, they are recorded through the city, through the county, and they show up on your title search. It's, we try to, I mean, we try to educate realtors, but it seems more of it's leaving it up to the title search. It's basically like the zone, you don't know that you're in commercial, you pull up your title search, you pull up your deal, there it is, you're in commercial, you get to do this in commercial. If you're in residential, this is what you get to do.
You know, Diana, the business that you're in and, and the knowledge that you guys have from being on this commission, if you need counsel to do anything. Because part of the problem is you educate a realtor and then, I don't know, they move or they decide to do something, you know, there's always a new influx of people. So I'm certainly open to suggestions, but, and Blake, you might have some great suggestions along those lines.
We've talked about it at length in our meetings and we haven't really come up with a way other than the title search. Because it spills over to builders also. Builders get an infill lot between two historic homes, they're clueless, they just want to throw a track home there. And so I think we're still bouncing around how we can get the word out. Because a lot of people don't know about zoning, the historic, a lot of people are just clueless that haven't been here for a long time.
And also it has to do with Austin realtors coming in. I mean, if, if you have, if you have somebody from Austin that's coming in and listing the property and then they're selling it to somebody, you know, who had a realtor, another realtor from Austin or wherever they're coming from. They're not going to do research, I don't think. I mean, they'll say, hey, you live in historic district, this is really great, you have a nice house, but they're not going to, I think, do the work or to know that there's restrictions.
The districts would be huge help. I think like Hyde Park, everybody knows what Hyde Park is in Austin. Or, I'm going to blank for the one that wrote it. Everybody knows those, but I think Austin has done those districts, at least named those cute little communities. I think that's a huge help. And it almost triggers people to start thinking about, well, I'm in this little district, I need to know more about it.
Well, again, if there's anything you need, if we need, if you guys need to come to council once a year to go over districts or do something, it's jointly a problem. Councilmember Peterson, I think you're one of them.
Yes, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench in this, but if anyone, you guys looking at, say, example, say if I went out in the country and bought a home that was built, or a house that was built in nineteen oh five. They got all my permitting, moved into town and then I apply for certificate of appropriateness, how would that work? It's kind of.
I think you need to go through, read off the criteria because then you know what, how these things are designed.
Yeah, and one of the things also that got changed in the ordinance, I think about a couple of years ago, was that it moving, complete new, you know, homes from one location outside the city into the city limits now requires a conditional use permit for that review. Because, partially because of that reason of, you're sometimes moving something from a historically significant area somewhere else into Bastrop that may throw, throw off that historic nature of that neighborhood. So that's already a review in the conditional use permit process to even allow that building into the city limits to start with.
And I think.
I, I think the, the challenge, council member, that we would have with that is, it's amazing the number of people that don't know they need a moving permit and show up and then become a code enforcement challenge for us. And that seems to be the bigger problem that we have is we get calls from folks that say, do you, this wasn't here last week, did you know it was here? And y'all have had to deal with a couple of those at the council level because we don't let them move in because once they're there, they're not moving out. And that's, I think, the biggest challenge.
I think that maybe a real proactive thing for us to do is just maybe have a pull down on our website. Buying in-town properties, you need to know, something like that where we break it down because, and if we get the word out about that, it's not like we're having to inform and do, it's just like, you need to read this. If you're a realtor investor or buying a property, you need to go to the city site because these are going to be enforced.
What started all of this in ninety-seven was one of our largest, most spectacular structures in town was going to be bought up and cut up into six pieces and moved to a ranch in Wimberly. And at the time, harvesting historic structures out of towns like ours was a big deal. And when you start thinking about, you know, what we'd look like if we had big holes in our neighborhoods where people had moved things out, you start thinking, you know, so, what do we do? And that's what started this whole effort.
And removal and demolition of buildings is covered in the, the new draft specifically as well, so.
So there's an empty lot, I buy it, I know I'm in a district, I look all around beside me and I get a builder, a designer, and now I have, I can still have a modern kitchen, I can still do whatever I want. But I now have some guidelines of what's an appropriate thing to build and where to build it on the lot.
Absolutely, and I believe even through the design standards, they don't tell you, you can't come in and put in a modern home in between two historic homes. They tell you the scale of that home, what, what size windows you might could be looking at. So that when you drive down the street, you don't go, why is that one story in the middle of all of these big two-story historic homes? If you're going to infill, you infill with the same repetition of what's going down the street. And so it, it lets you still put in modern architecture and modern design in historic districts. It just lets it be done so that scale's not offensive.
Linda, we've talked about that in existing downtown, there's large homes by small homes and so that, that last statement kind of concerns me because that sounds like they have to all be the same size.
I probably shouldn't have said it that way because we just had that one story put in on Church Street there next to the big home that was going to be cut up and harvested and moved away. And that was a, a single story or a single and a half story next to that huge beautiful mansion. It doesn't feel out of place because you have one stories and two stories and, and you have all of that movement going on in your neighborhood. But it's the, the styles and the character and the scale more than anything. You don't see a eight-foot ceiling porch on a one-story home next to a, a home that has twelve-foot ceilings. Even though it's one story, the scale is still there that matches the other homes or complements the other homes.
I, I just enjoy the diversity, you know, driving down Pecan Street is a great example of, you know, there, there's some little bitty houses by some really big houses. And I, I just don't want it to change one cookie cutter for another cookie cutter is what I'm.
Well, I think Church Street is the best example because it has a mansion, now new build, craftsman style home. And then the Bell House, which is probably somewhat federal, colonial, all three different styles, but you don't have a mansion plot between them. And the homeowner over there had thought of a track home with a garage door and a wood low slum porch, it was not, it looked horrible. And they came back with a beautiful craftsman style house, it was raised up and fit in beautifully. So I don't think it limits diversity, it just helps our unique character of Bastrop continue. Because it's kind of weird when you go down and see these gorgeous homes and then a pink brick fifty's on them. Because at the time, that's what they wanted, they didn't want it to be like the other houses. And it throws you off a little bit. I think the standards kind of, they help more than deter.
It's very, it's very, I'm sorry, councilor.
I was just going to make a quick comment, what I like about this, it, it works in conjunction with Form Based Code, which we've worked on pretty hard and to make it happen.
It does, and that's what I was going to also say, most all of your subdivisions or your developments now have HOAs. And they give you a whole list of rules all the way down to the back, you can't see, you can't have strings being visible on your blinds from your windows on the outside. This isn't that onerous, I don't even think we're trying to take you or color the painting anything. We're just trying to give you a bible so that it's easy for you, for the developer or your builder to be able to go through and go, this is a piece of cake. We're not having to go down to the planning department every two weeks and try to figure out what we're doing next, it's already all spelled out.
I want to compliment y'all on that house on Church Street, y'all worked real hard with the homeowner and it is an example of what y'all are talking about.
I would like to make a comment before we go too far from how to notify a prospective buyer that, you know, they're going to be in a historical district. Somewhere between the contract and the closing, and because I'm not a realtor, I don't know what path. There's got to be a document, it would be, like Dan said, it would be on the deed. And pull, if it's not recorded on the deed or attached to the deed, it doesn't show up. So if it's filed with the city, the county, attached to the deed, you may pull up eighteen hundred Hill Street. They will see in their title search, this home is in a historical district, just like it's in subdivision, they say, see restrictions for ridiculous levels. Well, I understand that part and here's the thing, if they didn't take the initiative as the homeowner themselves to do that, I'm just saying, there's got to be some sort of document that could be at closing or a savvy realtor, you know, that's in town, at least, you know, y'all, you know, communicate. But like you say, if it's an out of town realtor, don't know. But there should be a document that says, you need, you need to search this. You need to find out, you know, if your home is in a historical district or it has the binding, you know, restrictions on it. You need to find those out before they've gone into closing and paid all their money. So that's why I was saying, you know, think of something that you can do between signing that contract and before they get to closing. We know where it is, they don't know where it is. And they don't know that they're supposed to do that and nobody else is doing it for them necessarily, some people are. And so I'm just thinking there needs to be a notification that has to come between the contract and before the, and I don't know how we could do that.
We thought about the title agency, at title, and what if we have an Austin title?
Here's the, the challenge with all of that. I'd be willing to bet if we told all of the people in Hunter's Crossing that they didn't believe they were told that they were in a Pid. And in that huge voluminous stack of paperwork is a document that says you're in a Pid and they've signed it. But at closing, people are so engaged in their future and there's forty-seven things and the realtor says, just sign right here, just sign right here. So I think that the challenge is the people that want to know, find out, and the people that don't want to know will find out when they get here. And I don't know how to fix that because, you know, it's, it goes back to the buyer beware. At some point in time, there has to be some engaged populace. And if you've come to town and you've ridden up and down the street and you're buying it because you like the historical relevance of it, it's probably a sign that says, huh, I wonder how it stayed like that. So I think we have to do what is reasonably prudent, but you can't protect people from themselves.
I still think like you said, the, the district in Houston or Dallas maybe, anyone that's looking in that district understands that type of house. I think the first step for us would be the formation of our districts and the historical code, they have a little book that says.
The, the one thing that I do think would be helpful is our ability, once y'all get the districts, is to put them on the street signs so that it's visible and earmarks that, so that there is something that goes, huh, this might be a little special. I think that would be the best way to help.
That is, I think, some of the best money the city spent for our district was only to put the street sign toppers on. Anyone driving through any of those streets realized they were in that historic district enough that the city went to the trouble to call attention to every single corner in town. You can't go into that blindly thinking that you're not in a historic district. And it's very important for our community to have a way to, to work on those. Diana, you got something to say?
Yeah, I was just going to say that proactively, we could, as soon as we see a sales phone jilla on some of those houses, contact the realtor. Proactively being, you know, all of us live in town or close to town or in this area, you never know, like, we might be able to come up with a form or something that we call the realtor and email that says, by the way, this house is in a historic district and there are special criteria. And so when you sell a house, could you please let, you know, with the seller's disclosure, let them know. But I mean, ahead of the math, like Linda said, this, some people will pay attention to that and some people just don't.
I think that's a great idea, that also would then take care, it's not going to be perfect and, and I love that you say you can't not know because they can not, not know. But if it's a new realtor, you know, if it's a realtor that's not familiar, then that's for sure one that you'd want to have a email to them.
Question for city, contractors have to be registered with the city, they come in, they pop, pay for their little whatever to make sure that they're registered in the city. That means you know that there are codes that you have to follow, you're a registered contractor. Do we have anything like that for realtors? When realtors come in from Austin, do they need to come down to city hall and sign up and turn in their paperwork or anything?
Please, please don't make us do that.
They're clueless about code habitat, clueless about change of square. I don't know how we differentiate that, other, the first step, of course, is our district, but also maybe recording it to be, because the title agents in town are very good about going over their paperwork. And they say, you're in a HOA, this document tells you that, and they sign it. So they're, they're pretty good, I don't know about Austin. I don't have to do anything out there anymore, but I think recording it to the deed would be a huge step too.
The last thing on our, our to-do list going forward is obviously the local design standards and guidelines. That will have to go along with establishing those local historic district boundaries. And that's similarly something that we'll have to explore whether or not to do that in-house or with consultants or some other organization that can help with that possibly.
This is important, irrelevant to this meeting, but we are thrilled to indicate that Governor Greg Abbott, Representative John Sirier and Senator Kirk Watson have filmed a video that will be on Twitter and Facebook of all three pages supporting the My Bastrop Revolution to get to the top three, so how's that, Texas?
And that's why I took the call, that's what, that's what we were waiting for.
I'd like to, I'll go back to this, and I'm hammering this because I think it's a piece of the puzzle that particularly those of us on the council might not understand. But the criteria for a hit, and it'll, it'll close the loop on this, how old is, is historic, is the criteria for listing something. And it's, it's very simple. It's number A, possesses significance in history, architecture, archaeology, or culture. B is associated with events that have made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of local, regional, state, or national history. C is associated with the lives of persons significant in our past. D embodies the distinctive characteristics of a type, period, or method of construction. And E represents the work of a master designer, builder, or craftsman. Or F represents an established and familiar visual feature of the city.
Bill, that sounds like every house could meet that.
Eventually.
But with the resurgence of mid-century, the whole new addition kind of fits into that. Some of our 50s houses fall into that. And they would have their own niche now, just as the big Victorians would keep their niche. You wouldn't find a big Victorian with little metal windows, with little grids in them from a 90s house. So I, I think it's huge.
And I will say that we have applicants that come in, and they don't meet two of these criterias. So even though they sound like they're fairly broad-stroked, not everybody gets that. It really is. You have to come in with the, with the information you want to receive.
But what I hear you guys saying is, once the districts are done, and there's not going to be a financial incentive, that, that becomes kind of a lesser impact, right? Because if I don't want to be, I don't want the designation, and I don't meet the criteria, that's all well and good. But I'm in the district, so I'm still following the design guidelines.
You are along with all your neighbors following that design guideline?
Yes, it's consistent.
That's the whole deal of trying to keep.
But so then that means A through F don't matter anymore. Because I still have to follow the district guidelines. If my, if my address is in the district.
Depends on how your district guidelines are structured, but you would have to follow some of those. Like, they were discussing earlier, the house doesn't necessarily have to be, it can be modern, as long as it meets certain criteria as an infill. But if you are, if you're considered a historic landmark, then you need to be meet, matching that time period, that, probably a narrower scope within that design guideline for that district. Because your house is already nailed down onto what period and what level of, what it's historic and contributing value is versus structures that are non-contributing, or are infill, that are making sure that they're in the, the scale of the neighborhood, but not necessarily the same look of the historic area.
We're not asking you to put turn post on a home that's, or porch post that look like they're Victorian with gingerbread on it, just because the houses on both sides of you are Victorian. What if you, most of your design standards, when you look at them, they make that very simply stated, it needs a porch on the front, your windows need to be at this height, the scale of the building can't be any higher than this. So it gives you, it gives the builder, it gives the architect, a real nice, easy place to start before they even begin designing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm fine with all of that. But I've, I've bought a home, it has a historic designation in it. So now I have a historic designation, because it's saved with the property. I don't want it anymore. So there's an, an ability to opt out. But even after I go through onerous or not, and I opt out, and now I own a piece of property that is not designated, I still need to comply with the district so that I don't adversely impact my neighborhood. That, that's what I, and if I want to be historic, then I will have and keep my designation. Then I may have some more hurdles to go over, but I'm, I'm making that decision that I want to do that to keep that designation. Am I understanding this?
Yes.
Okay. I, I have no problem with that.
Has anybody ever wanted to get rid of their?
Has anybody ever wanted to get rid of their designation?
I think we've had anyone that's ever been in the program that's come and asked for it to be removed. We did have a, a outside entity, commercial entity, that ended up foreclosing on a residential property. They would have rather not had that on there anymore. But when you looked at all the hurdles you had to go through to remove it, it was simpler for them to bring it up to standard than it was to go through the, the process to opt out of.
One of the criteria for the ones that are receiving incentive is if they opt out, they have to pay back the past incentives that they have received.
That's what I was going to bring up. You have to refund everything. Like, if I decided I didn't want to be a historic home anymore, you have to refund all the incentives you receive.
All money you have received.
So that's something to think about before the incentive is done away with. That's just my comment. It's something to think about.
It is something to think about, because it does, it does help people really realize when they're, when they're purchasing one of these properties. This is truly, you know, people drive through our town, looking at the architectures, looking at the homes, looking at our inventory of those items. And when you start letting that slip and letting it go, you can't get it back. You can't get it back.
Okay. Sorry for being distraught. We're trying to retweet and share the video that they've released tonight, because they went out of their way to get it released tonight. So sorry for a little bit of that distraction. Very much appreciate y'all's time. It's 7:15. Council has another meeting at 7:30, but we always want to make sure that everyone on the commission has an opportunity to share any concerns, or make any comments or questions. So Diana, do you have any other comments or anything? Ms. Cartwright? Blake? Susan?
I'll save them for.
I'll save them for another time. I do have some other things that I would like to address in historic areas, but I'll do it another time. Or I'll do it individually, and I'll do it through the board.
Through the board, okay.
Yeah.
I would like to compliment the staff on this new draft we put together. See how thin this is? Compare it to the last one that we've been going through. There's so much legal verbiage through it, that no one, I don't care if you are a homeowner, builder, or anything, you couldn't figure out what the thing is talking so much about. This is much simpler, much easier organized. And compliment to the staff on, on their work on it.
Yay, Stan. Thank you. Thank you very much, Dan. Dave, anything we should have talked about? Councilmember Peterson? Councilmember Jones? Councilmember Ennis?
I'm good.
Councilmember Nelson?
I'm good.
City manager? All right. With that, it is 7:20, and I am adjourning the city council portion of this meeting.
Nothing further from the floor, Commissioner? Well, we're done. Thank you.
Thank you again so much for serving. Really appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Great board. Now, we shouldn't have any more interruptions, but we are thrilled because Governor Abbott, State Senator Kirk Watson, and Representative John Sirier just released a video supporting Bastrop for the Small Business Revolution. So they, they recorded it this afternoon, and I was waiting for the call, and I got the call in the middle of the last meeting, and I rudely jumped up and ran away. And we're now retweeting it and making sure we get it. But really appreciate the, their, their support. So, that being said, it is 7:33. I have a quorum of city council, and so I am calling this joint workshop, with, with the library board and city council. I'm calling the city council portion to order. Ms. Jenkins, if you'd like, do you have a quorum?
Yes, I have a quorum.
And I'm sorry, I forgot. You gotta talk into the mic. You will really need to push the button towards you to turn your mic on. And it would be very helpful to Colin if, when you're not speaking, you turn it off. But I, I can already tell you, Ms. Jenkins, there's no way they're going to be able to, you gotta get obnoxiously close to the microphone.
You can't be quite as loud, no.
Well, but that, that's not the problem. It's the people at home. They can't hear you. So you, you, and I'm not a big, I, no one has ever told me I needed a microphone, but we've really got to speak into it, or people start texting Colin that they can't hear at home, and they're mad. So for each and every one of you, if you are using the microphone, please get really close, turn it on, speak. And then it's helpful, if you turn it off, it helps with the back feed. Colin's trying to give our folks at home that are watching the best possible experience. So, Ms. Jenkins, if you'd like to call yours to order?
Yes, the meeting will come to order. The meeting will come to order.
There you go. Obnoxiously close. And I know people don't always care for that. One of the things that we did, though, what we've been doing, this is a commitment that council has made. We have 15 boards and commissions, and we've agreed to have joint meetings with them. One of my goals when I came to office was to make sure that our boards are a reflection of the community that we live in. And I think that we've been fairly successful in doing that. But one of the things that we heard from a lot of the boards is, we don't ever get to talk to council. You know, we, we know folks on council, but it's something where we're sharing ideas and going over goals and expectations. It's been very beneficial of all of the meetings that we've had so far. It's certainly been helpful for council. We really appreciate y'all's time. I know it's not your normal night, and an extra meeting, and I appreciate that. For the folks at home, and also for some of the council members, I would very much like to have each person say their name, and maybe how long they've been on the board, so that everybody know who knows who's in the room. So we'll change it up and start with Councilmember Nelson this time. Go around the room.
Law Nelson, member of council since June of last year.
Bill Ennis, member of council, and I have been on as long as Mr. Nelson has.
Linda Oble, city manager, will be here one year in March.
Connie Schrader, I'm mayor. I became mayor in May of 2017.
Deborah Jones, city council, place five.
Bill Peterson, city council, place one, approximately a year ahead. Good start.
Mickey Duval, I've been the library director for 16 and a half years, and I've been at the library for 18.
Carolyn Wigginson, I've been a member for the last two years, and I was a member back when Mickey first came on board.
Jamie McDonald, I believe I've been on about 13 years.
Mary Jo Jenkins, I've been on the board for 34 or 35 years.
Becky Shaffer, I've been on the board for about 20 years.
Becky Bennett, and I've been on the board, I think, about 18 years.
Thank you very much. So Mickey is going to be our presenter this evening. I think all of you have a, an agenda in front of you. And Ms. Jenkins, if it's okay, let's let Mickey make a presentation. I encourage everybody, the whole point of doing this and doing it with this layout is so that we can have a conversation, and it's not real formal, and it's not like, well, I didn't know if it was okay to ask. It's okay to ask. That's why we've all are giving up our evening together. So we really want to hear from everybody in here. If you have any questions for council, and council will, I know, not be shy about asking you questions. So with that, Mickey?
Okay. You're looking at what we consider at the library, the best picture of the library. It shows all the different architectural designs from the expansion. First of all, we are a member of the city. We are called a municipal library. And as such, we do follow the vision and the mission of the city of Bastrop. Focus areas for the city, we are, as an organization, focused in the same areas as you are. We may come at it from a different direction, but we still believe that we're fiscally responsible. I take a certain amount of pride in that. I have good oversight by the board members to keep me in line. Economic vitality, you would think a library, eh, but, you know, the people that come to the library are our economic base, and they're the ones that really drive our economy. Communication, we are all about communication. I feel like our responsibility to the city and to our patrons is to enable them to communicate, and for us to communicate back to them. It's all about customer service. We know that we need to be able to talk to them, they need to be able to talk to us, and we need to be able to pride these services that they're wanting us to provide. Uniquely Bastrop, eh. I like uniquely Bastrop. Every time I see that, I think of East of Weird. So it's, you know, Bastrop is unique in and of itself, the history, the passion, the dedication of the public servants, the dedication of the historical society. It's just, it's a very unique little, little city that seems to be growing. Organization with excellence, I, again, I think that's something that we all get to share in after city, of being a part of that. Multimodal mobility, eh, I don't know. We've asked for a bus stop on a number of occasions, and we'd still like to have one of those in front of the library. Community safety, we follow all the safety rules. I want people who want to come to the library to feel like they can be safe when they're there. It's an important element in our mission, that people do feel safe when they come to the library. We have a very beautiful library. We get compliments all the time. And I think we add to the environment for Bastrop, even though we are in a park, but we sit right next to one, and we can see the river from our little round room in the back.
I want to address the multimodal mobility and the bus stop in front of the library. One of the things that we are working with CARTS to do is to create a bus stop downtown. And it will actually be at the corner of Spring and Main. We are going to use that as a multimodal mobility transfer, if you will. Folks will be able to ride the bus and get off there. We're working to have a bike share program, so if they wanted to ride the bus and then get a bike and ride around downtown, they would. And then, from a walkability standpoint, you would be two blocks at that point in time from the bus stop. But Trey is working with CARTS staff to make those changes. And I think they're going to happen sometime this year, where there will actually be a place for the bus to stop, park there. And that's going to kind of be our multimobility hub in the downtown area.
That'd be great. I know a lot of people would appreciate that. Managed growth, I'll leave that up to the city council. I think that growth's coming, and I have felt that way for some time now. The library board, it was created by the city council back in about 1967. And they, they are the people's representative to the library. In other words, they're making sure that the library is doing those things it should do for the people in the community, as far as their services and their programs. They work at the direction of the city council and the mayor. And they have, they have been very supportive of me in the library and my staff. And they are, they're a resource for me to go to if and when I do need them. This is our mission. I think that the mission of the library is to provide free and unrestricted access to informational, educational, cultural, recreational library materials and services in a clean, comfortable, secure environment for people of all ages. That's equal access for everyone. Not some, some people, everybody. That's what we're about. Our vision, Bastrop Public Library aspires to be a vital and innovative resource that enhances the quality of life, encourages that enhances the quality of life, encourages lifelong learning, and provides a welcoming community environment for our diverse population. Here are some of our accomplishments from 2017. We started a Makerspace. Basically, we bought a 3D printer. We've had a few programs. The most interesting thing for me is that the people who come to my programs, half are adults, half are juveniles or young people. So, I have a lot of them, not a lot, but I have some hobbyists that come in, electrical engineers, you know, they have 3D printers, they have CNC routers. So, they've been a good resource for me. Our events and our programming is Bonnie Pearson does a wonderful job as our program supervisor in presenting programs throughout the year. And last year, we had a very good year as far as participation in our programs. The Halloween Fest, the Halloween Fun Trail was a big event for us this year. We had about thirteen hundred people come through the library doors on that night to go through a little spook house that we created in the meeting room. So, something new for us, something fun for the community. We did a lot of community partnering last year. You can see the list up there. One of the things that we try to do is work with other departments, be they state, federal, local clubs. The Lost Pines Garden Club, for example, is one of our biggest supporters. They have a plant sale every year in association with our book sale, and they donate all their proceeds from the sale to the library. So, I'm very glad to have them on board and to be our big supporters. Something new, we are now included in a department called Leisure Services. And we will be, and have been, partnering with the Parks Department and Recreation Department on putting together programs. Right now, my staff is working on the Summer Reading Program. They're planning for the Summer Reading Program, and we've got some great programs coming up. And I'll let you know more about that in the future.
One of the things that I think is important to note is why Mickey and the library are now a part of the Public Works and Leisure Services Division. I think times have changed. Used to, kids played outside, and they were fine playing in the dirt and, you know, riding their bicycle and all of that. And we've seen a change in how kids entertain themselves now. And so, a lot of kids have no interest in going outside. They have indoor interest. And so, we view leisure services in a holistic manner, so that we can program not only outdoor activities, but indoor activities. And because I have been extraordinarily passionate about libraries since I was three, it is important, in my view, to ensure we can keep children and customers of all ages engaged in the library. The biggest challenge, and I'm preaching to the choir here, is we get children through grade school, they go to intermediate school, lose interest in the library until they get into high school, and they only come in only for homework. And now with the internet, maybe they do, maybe they don't. They come back when they've got kids, we lose them again. And then, when they get to be empty nesters, we might get them again. So, in looking at how do we have that customer for life, we're hopeful that this change in how we view libraries and that perspective will help us meet all of the demographics from cradle to grave, where they are engaged, library patrons, not those that come and go.
Is that something that you brought to the table when you came on? Or is that something that, because that's just a really great idea. I love that about just making the library indoor/outdoor, basically is what you're saying.
No, they're not indoor/outdoor. The, I didn't explain that, I didn't complete the loop. But Parks and Recreation does the outdoor programming with the movies and things like that. Yes.
Yeah, you've created this indoor/outdoor partnership, and it's just really, you hit it. You hit the nail on the head. So, good job whoever worked on that, y'all, that's really awesome.
Yes, and we hope to grow that in the future, and to be able to provide more services and programming. What we're going to be doing in 2018, what we're already doing, we're working very hard, my staff and I. The library staff are responsible for manning the emergency management shelters for the city of Bastrop. And since we're having a new building built using FEMA money, we are working very hard on getting policies, procedures, inventory, appliance list, all of those things that you would need to do to initially set up a shelter. This is being done in partnership with the senior center, because they will be the group that will be in the building the most. And then, of course, they'll work with us whenever an emergency does arise and we need to use the shelter. I have, with the help of my staff, created a space within the library itself where we can put a Makerspace. We actually have a physical place where now we can actually have people come in and do different things, of which we have nothing for them to do except for the 3D printer right now. But I'm hoping soon to engage the community and ask them what it is that they would like to see in the Makerspace. And now we have a space that we can do that.
I can't understand what you're saying, the Makers?
Okay, the Makers, Makerspace. I'm sorry, I'm mumbling. In a Makerspace, basically, for those who may not be aware or know what they are, they're a place for people to go to create, to learn, to innovate using different kinds of technologies, different kinds of formats. Children can come in and learn how to do coding. They have something called SNAP circuits, where they learn how to put circuits together in a simplified manner. 3D printers print items using plastic. There's also any number of, well, basically, there's no limit to whatever it is that you want to imagine, that you want to make. And that's what this is all about. I relate it, okay, for me, it's just like somebody's coming in and looking for a book. You go into the library, you're looking for a book, and all of a sudden, there's this whole new world for you that you may not be aware of. It could teach you things, it could make you feel, it could do any number of things. And so will this Makerspace. I mean, when you go into a space and somebody sits down either with you or you sit down by yourself, and you're enabling them to create or discover, or to sit and share and innovate, I think to me, there's really no difference. I mean, it's the same, you get the same values from reading as you do from creating, thinking, innovating, learning. It's all the same thing you do when you read a book.
Councilmember, let me offer this a different way. The Tuesday night, when we talked about the retail impact study, I spent some time talking about millennials and Generation Z are very much about the experience. Think about the Makerspace as an experiential exercise when you go to the library. For some, reading books is passe, but the point is we're going to stimulate your brain to be creative. So, it's the experiential impact that that generation now needs, and that's how the libraries are remaining relevant in the 21st century with technology.
It's not only technology, because, you know, children can sit there with Legos, and that's all they need to go to town and to do things with their imagination. But technology is a big driver. With that in mind, expanding our STEAM programming, science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics, very much a catchphrase nowadays. But, again, it's teaching, learning, discovering, and trying to, I think, instill some curiosity and maybe even encourage some young people to go someplace where they wouldn't be as far as science, technology, engineering, arts, and mathematics. These are areas where our society is moving in those directions, and people need to be exposed to them, made aware of them. And one way you can do that is through programming. Early literacy storytime, that's always been a big thing for us. That's your storytimes, and then they have the storytime plus afterwards, where the children actually get to manipulate things. Activities for tweens and teens. We've added tweens to our programming because we felt the need, that they needed an outlet and some programming as well. Supporting independent learning with the Summer Reading Program. That's, the Summer Reading Program is one of our biggest events of the year. And there's, there's so many definitions, there's so many ways I can explain it, but it gets down to the fact that we want to encourage everybody, but especially the children, to keep reading. You know, read a book, read on the computer, play a game. I mean, you're still reading. You need to read during the summer, so you don't lose those skills that you gained during the year. So, that's really our focus. To do that, we encourage people to come. We have great programming during the summer, and that encourages people to come to the library. We're hoping to increase adult programming, programming for adults. That's something that we're working on, that we've been wanting to do for some time. It's just, we've had some challenges as far as staffing goes to be able to do that. And of course, we're going to continue to partner with other agencies. It's very important to me and to my staff to be able to go out into the community and find those organizations that need someplace where they can come and share their knowledge, their support, like the Children's Advocacy Center. It's important that they have a place where they can go to connect with the community, and the library is one of those places that they can go. And social media, mobile technology. It's amazing how many people access what services we have at the library by using their mobile device. It's getting to be more and more important. The city app is more and more important. I just cannot stress enough how important those technologies are becoming. The future, implement passive and directed Makerspace programming for all ages. That's, we want to teach, we want them to learn, we want them to get exposed to technology that maybe they don't have at home. And we're very encouraged by the response that movement received so far. Continue to provide the educational and entertaining programs for youth. You certainly may.
Passive, passive and directed, could you define the difference?
Okay, passive is like, a child sits down, and you give them some Legos, and you maybe give them a design, and say, make that design out of these Legos. And then you walk away, okay? That's what you would call passive. In other words, they're not being directed directly.
I got you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Partnerships, gain marketing and media knowledge to better serve our community. That's going to be one of our big cushions this year and next, is to get the word out to the community. I don't know how long people have lived in Bastrop that are watching this, but sometimes it's kind of hard to get your word out there. You know, it's really kind of hard to get your message to people. And we're going to be working really hard on doing that. We have a lot of new people moving to the area, and we need them to know that we've got this library here, and it's for them. And the city is providing a great resource for them, and that we want them to come out and find us and use our services.
One of the challenges, I think, that cities have, and it is especially challenging for the library, because programming based on age depends on who you market to and why. You know, storytime is intended to help build the vocabulary of a child, because the capacity to learn is so broad between birth and the age of four. And as you move through programming of the library, it changes. And that's really the challenge cities have, because we have customers from cradle to grave. And we have seniors that don't use electronics, still actually read their mail, and will open it, will come to City Hall, want that personal service. The Generation Z that's coming up, that my nephew, that's ten, is a part of, has never known life without this. Gen X is the last analog generation. And so, when you're dealing with Gen Zs that are electronic, they're not going to read the mail. If you're not tweeting or on Snapchat, they're not going to know you're there. And that's exactly right. And so, the real challenge for the library is having to communicate in every medium possible and being flexible about that, and not residing in the one medium I'm comfortable with, because that's my age. And that's the challenge that I think government is facing. We have two threats, and that's how quickly technology is changing, and the fact that we're not keeping up. And two, we are not flexible in doing ten or fifteen things to get the same message out to a smaller group of people. We're used to mailing a newsletter once a month and the utility bill, and expecting people to read it. And so, this is one of those things that I would encourage y'all as a board to really help, challenge the paradigms that we face as a community. Engage people older and younger than you, your grandchildren and their friends, to help us with this, because it's an ever-changing challenge. Technology changes every eighteen months. So, just when we think we sort of know what we're doing, we're seriously behind. So, this is one of those, as a board, y'all could really help us get out of the box and be creative.
Okay, that's about it for what I've got to say. Do I have any comments or questions?
Councilmember Jones? I, ever since I moved to Bastrop, the library has always been first-rate, and y'all have been one of the most excellent, functional, relevant, appropriate, polite boards ever. And I appreciate every single one of you. You just do a great, great job. Mickey?
Here, here.
You do a great job.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think I left the library as well, the, and I got this idea from the city manager, and I don't know if I'm stealing something that she was going to mention, and I don't know how big of a problem it would be, but it hurts me that if I'm walking up from Fisherman's Park that I can't get into the library. but it hurts me that if I'm walking up from Fisherman's Park that I can't get into the library from that side. It was interesting to me that the picture you said is the prettiest picture of the library, has no door. So, I mean, I know that's money and I know that, but just if we're dreaming big, if that would be a welcoming thing because, you know, honestly, if you're walking up from Fisherman's Park, you have no idea how to get into that building. So I've just always kind of wondered about that and then Linda had kind of put that in words. The other thing, I'm noticing that you made a quorum, but barely. So there's five of you out of nine. I know it's not your normal night to meet. Nine is kind of a large number. I don't think that is in the charter, like Planning and Zoning is nine members and that's in the charter, the city charter, that it be nine members. I'd like to hear comments on nine members, not nine members. And without looking at anyone, without causing any trouble, one of the things that I think might be helpful is if maybe you had some new people on the board that maybe hadn't, haven't lived here for a really long time because I think you may find yourselves trying to reach a group of people that you're not really, they're not really represented on your board. And you can say I'm out of bounds or overreacting, but I would like to put that out there for something. I would like your input on that.
Well, personally, I'm comfortable with the board. The reason I am is because they're knowledgeable. And the reason I like the number of them is that because I get more input from that many, that means I have more of an input from the community than, say, a smaller board where I'd get a more narrow view from the community as to what kind of services they want at their library. I think it's important that we get as much input as we can from as many people as we can. I think it helps our transparency to tell you the truth. It's way that one group is not getting some services that another group would get only because they're being overlooked, not on purpose, but maybe because they're being overlooked. Now, as far as the actual experience goes, libraries are rather unique in such a way that you've got to have a little bit of understanding of what a library is, what a library does. And that's not something that most people have. I'm fortunate that the people that are on my board, a majority of them come from educational fields in that they are familiar with libraries and they've worked with libraries for many, many, many years before they actually get appointed to the board. Did anybody else want to make a comment?
I'm fairly sure I'm fixing to step off in it, but do the four that aren't here look like the five that do?
I'm sorry?
I said, are the four that not here look like the five that are?
I'm sorry, I'd like you to explain that.
You have four board members that are not here tonight. And she's saying if the four of them were sitting with us, would they all?
They're, they're all white women.
Are you?
So what I'm looking for is the diversity of, well, you are a woman, I appreciate that, but we don't have the age and the reflect, the reflection of the community. And I'm not speaking for the mayor, but I appreciate the educators, but young and hip, they know how to engage. And so part of the challenge with the different customers is making sure that your customers are represented. So maybe because the board is passionate and I'm thrilled with that, is there might be some focus groups that y'all might be willing to sponsor. And so for instance, is engaging folks under 20, how are you communicated with now? What would we need to say to get the message out? Because one of the challenges that I have come to understand is I am too old, and I'm 51, to communicate with teenagers because I'm not going to get it right. So I look to people that are in that market to tell me what adjectives I need to use, what spin I need to use, what saying I need to use to do that. So I'm not casting any stones here and I hope that I'm saying this correctly so that's not taken out of context. But I think the challenge for libraries being relevant in the future is that connection point to each of those decades of customers. And I think in the future, the challenge becomes even greater with the technology, the media opportunities, the social networks that are out there. So I would just encourage to make sure that the input that you get as a board and the decisions that you make have that input.
One of our members who is not here tonight is a black woman. And one of them is a white man. The other two are white women.
Are they, are there young people represented?
I'd like to respond to that.
Okay.
I don't think you have to be a teenager to communicate with teenagers. I spent 25 years communicating with teenagers and I was pretty successful, if I, you know, if I can say that. And Mary Jo spent probably 35 years, 37 years communicating with children. And I don't think you have to be a teenager or a seven-year-old or a 20-year-old to know how to communicate with them and to understand their needs and interests and understand them as a customer demographic. When it comes to the actual technical knowledge, you know, like Snapchat and Instagram, that's not for the board, that's for Nikki's staff, you know? And that, and Nikki's staff can take care of that. I don't think we have a problem with diversity on this board. We always welcome newcomers and we, yes, we want a diverse board. And when there's an opening, we look at the entire community and we ask ourselves, is there, you know, who, what, what part of our community needs more representation on this board? So, you know, don't look at us and make assumptions based on what we look like.
And clearly I did step off in it, so my apologies. That's not what I was attempting to accomplish. I am just saying that one of the challenges is the differences in the generations. And what, you know, clearly as city manager and being very passionate about the library, I'm just interested in making sure that we're getting that message out. So I'm delighted to know that y'all are cognizant of that and that you work to do that. And that was all my question was about. Been here a year and trying to feel my way through that. So if I have offended you, my apologies. It is really a benign question, perhaps not asked appropriately, to just make sure all of the customers of the community and at the library are being represented so that we don't inadvertently become antiquated.
I think most of the younger people know us because we have been around, they recognize us, they feel comfortable talking to us.
That's awesome.
Anywhere or anytime. And the older people know us because we have been around, we've been on the board and they'll pick up the phone and call and say, hey, you know, could you all do this at the library? Or I think it would be a good idea if you did that. And I don't think that's a problem.
So you guys don't have any problems making a quorum? You're able to have all of your meetings?
No, normally we have everybody at a meeting. And one of our members is out of town tonight. One was ill at a meeting the other night and I don't know if she's recovered or not.
Well, and we appreciate ill people not bringing their germs to us, so I'm completely, completely fine with that. But just with some of our other boards, once you get to nine, you know, people are busy and so sometimes if it's a seven, if you can, needing a four is a little bit easier to do sometimes. So I just wanted to double check on the nine.
I have a.
We usually have good attendance.
We very, yes, we usually have very good attendance. And generally, when somebody is not there, they have a good reason for not being there.
That's excellent. Thank you.
I wanted to address the communication issue because councilmember Gary Schiff is our liaison. So I've brought up to him several times of ideas because the library wants to communicate in the very best way possible, yet sometimes we're thwarted because of the technology issues that we have there because it has to share the server and things like that. But when I travel, I always look for the library and see what is there. I always look at their way they communicate whenever I travel. And I told Gary, one of the things I've noticed is the app. And so if I go on the app and that, it even lists Storytime for Children or the tweens are doing this. So it lists every single theme for every single day with all the times in it so that you're communicating for your entire city, not just for a wine swirl or something like that. So it covers a huge variety, even Casa, even just anything. And the other theme is Brenham and LaGrange have really good social media where they send you upcoming events for every single thing they're having. I get it every month, I get a whole list of what's going to go on. They have a event site where you can even go online there and order tickets and things like that. If we did that, we could really abound just to have even the soup bowl thing added.
I think that's the very kind of things we were talking about.
And so it's, it's, it's just if we communicated everything that was going on in Bastrop, not limited to just certain themes. And I don't know what your plans are for the Visit Bastrop theme?
Visit Bastrop?
But I just, this is a, I think that each organization that's doing something has their own way of communicating themes from all various different ways and we're never all consolidated into one. And I don't know if that fits that Visit Bastrop or what area it fits, but somehow or another, all of it needs to get communicated as a whole because that is what would bring more people to Bastrop over and over is seeing the huge amount of things that are there, even if it included what was going on at the Hyatt. It's just the more that's happening, the more that draws people here.
A couple of things. One, we can provide access to our social media to the library and y'all can start tweeting and putting those events out there. Number two is you are spot on with Visit Bastrop. One of the big items that they're doing relative to communications is putting together an event calendar and making it very easy for Bonnie or whoever to be able to go and put that program on there so that that happens. Some of the technology challenges the library has been having has been resolved recently with Jesse coming on board, has it not?
Yes, yes.
So we have, what we did this year was we added another information technology person because Andreas was set up to fail. I mean, he was one person doing the work of 15. Jesse Migas, who we recently hired, came from the city of Louisville and before that, the city of Marshall and was the library guru. So when we interviewed him, we were beside ourselves, excited because he got it and was passionate. And I think there's been a lot of improvements in some of the technology changes. But I'm glad you mentioned what you did relative to the promotion because this year we consolidated the multimedia department, special events, downtown and the convention center under a hospitality and downtown department in an effort to improve our communications. And we have merged our technology so that it's easier for administrators to go on and push that message. And we just need to add somebody with the library. So thank you for bringing that up and we can rectify that tomorrow.
Okay, one other is I probably get about five different Texas magazines and they list the calendar of events. Very seldom is Bastrop's information in them.
Would you be so kind as to email me or take a picture and text those to me and we'll make sure that changes?
Yeah, be kind to them.
Well, along the lines of communication, Linda, the rest of y'all, I have a Cassie Wilhelm. I'm just moving her into a position that I'm calling, she's going to be our communications person. And she'll be doing calendars, publicity and making sure that we are on social networks. Our presence is there, that we are updating the city's information. Visit Bastrop, I'll definitely have her talk with Sarah about that. And that's something, Jamie, that we're trying to work on, but we have a ways to go. And we are working towards that goal and I'm pretty excited about Cassie being able to provide those kind of services for us. And we're just, you know, baby steps, we're getting there.
I just want to confirm what I know firsthand from every single person I see here today in that you guys successfully cover probably eight decades. You have a very comfortable, appropriate, hands-on connection and cover. I've not ever seen anyone with these abilities that you guys have. From your, from your relationship with the school, the students, every one of my kids, you've covered them. And my kids cover, you know, pretty big window. And again, y'all just do an amazing job. I appreciate you very much. Swiggin' T, were you going to say something?
No, I just said thank you.
Okay, I was going to make sure to have. Is there any other questions or items that you were hoping that we would cover tonight? Ms. Schaefer?
Yes, I just want to back up just a little bit and point out that we have never, as far as I can remember, had, where we could not have our meeting because we didn't have a quorum. I don't think we have ever had that issue. And as far as, I mean, we don't run the library. Nikki has a fantastic staff that does that. And I feel that we are there to back him and we do 100% because we know what a good job that they do. And so I think that that is our expertise, I guess, if you want to say. And we do have the communication, I think, with all levels of ethnicity and age. And I just wanted to point that out.
Yes, Ms. Swiggin' T?
I have been on many different boards over the years and honestly, I have never seen a board that was as efficient as this board. We all feel like we can communicate our thoughts and ideas and there's never, there's never like a separation that occurs. I feel just as comfortable with two Barbara Clemmons as I do to Mary Jo, to any one of these ladies and to Nikki. You know, it's just a wonderful board to be on. And I just, I want to see it remain that way.
Thank you. Uh, council, is there anybody else? Councilmember Peterson, do you have anything to ask or add?
The only thing I want to add is you ladies are clicking, keep up the good work.
Councilmember Jones? Do you have anything else you want to add? Councilmember Ennis?
I'll second Ms.
I'll second Mr. Peterson, y'all do a great job.
You got to say you're clicking, or you're not, you're...
Well, I did. Now am I on? I'll second Mr. Peterson, y'all do a great job.
Councilmember Nelson?
Well, since it started with second, I can't second it. I, I think that y'all are part of the new, now the, the new dynamics of our, of our community. I think we're showing, especially through some of these joint meetings, that there's an inclusiveness that's being brought about by getting input from the citizens through our boards. And I think the new dynamic is the simple fact that, that we are showing that we're being more progressive by being more inclusive and by creating a result-oriented attitude so that we get things accomplished collectively rather than separately and stove-piping these things. So some of these comments are very valuable toward our thought process. Well, thank y'all.
I think all of our board members are very passionate about the library, too. And we're kind of like mother friends about our libraries, so...
Well, I just want to thank my board. And like I said, I've been here a number of years, and I've worked with a number of different board members. We've had other board members come and go. And I appreciate their support. And yes, they may get along, but that doesn't mean they don't speak their minds. My, my staff is wonderful, they're great staff. But it's very comfortable for them and me to know that I have this board that I can go to if I get challenged on the materials. I mean, I go to my board, you know, they're my go-to in a situation like that. So it's a, it's a privilege for me to be able to work with them as much as it is to work with the city and to work with y'all. Thank you so much.
We really appreciate the time and effort and the passion that you have for the library. We appreciate your coming to the meeting tonight. And from a council standpoint, since council doesn't have anything else to say, I'm prepared to adjourn the meeting. From a council standpoint, Nikki, was there anything else that you wanted to cover?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine. Anybody else?
Okay, so it is 8:27, and I'm adjourning to council.
Meeting adjourned.
Thank you very, very much.